Too much going on at work, man.
I got you. We got a full house tonight. Good old time. Oh, you want one right there? We got a full house tonight. No, I don't. Don't wear a hat on site. Got all the news crews here tonight with us. This is Melvin Dale, Michigan. Yeah, tell me about it.
Thanks for having us tonight. We're here to go over the Crossbow Shield Healthcare Regal as well for employees' items and the post sixty-five items. The employees in the pre-sixty-five retirees will be around November first and the post-sixty-five retirees are planning to be on January first. So I believe we all have a little bit of information regarding the healthcare. Alright, thank you.
Alright, I need a motion to approve the regularity status dated August sixth. Support moved by Philip Housky, supported by Frederick. Any discussion? A non-help vote. I was like, why am I not here?
She backed us. She quit. Couldn't take it. It's number three.
One organized meeting.
Jackson?
Yes.
Awalii?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Philip Housky?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Alright, public safety please.
Hi, good afternoon. The first item on the agenda is the uniform that you hired, not for residents, but right now maybe discussion and basic feedback of some things. The safety commission includes their new officer uniform list, so that when the officers are hired, they have a list of items that they go to the uniform shop and they can get the exact items off of it. Rich and I kind of talked about how DVW does this, when DVW needs uniform or equipment, when they first hire on, they go to CISO, wherever the uniform shop is, they know exactly what uniform to pick out, what boots to pick out. And if they, it's uniform across the board and we know the exact price. There's no added price if it's not coming out of, you know, the uniform or the price that you're coming from. So I did do, I did some research into three uniform companies, I did get quotes from Ally Brothers, quotes from NY Uniform, and we did have a, I guess already from Priority One, we already had. When we sent the comment both to Priority One, we gave some items. So I guess there's been a lot of confusion of, you know, how much money that officers get for their anniversary, they get twelve hundred dollars for their anniversary, this isn't the twelve hundred dollars, check the one anniversary, this is the uniform for the officers when they go. Rich and I kind of talked about too, like, okay, say it was twelve hundred dollars, say it was a dollar amount, we don't know for sure that they would be getting those items. So we know what items they can get, they can pick out the specific uniform, the specific boot, then we know how much it's gonna be. So would that be something that you guys in the future would, or would you add some money for more research in regards to that?
Before I recognize this, Joe Jackson?
As far as in the future, if you guys want to make a resolution?
You said as far as picking the specific items?
Correct. I was talking about the items on the YouTube uniform list, that's the class A uniform, tie bar. For the starting officer, correct, yep. Yep, no boots, tank top, magazine holster, radio holster, class B duty bag, and leather jacket. The public safety commission already approved this again. Ally Brothers came out to about fifteen hundred dollars, Priority One came out to about fourteen sixty, NY Uniform in Troy came out to about eleven hundred dollars. And this is something too, we can also look at, let's go with the cheaper option of this, see if we can drive down the cost.
Yes, before I recognize this, Philip Housky?
Is there a different quality?
Yeah, I mean, a five-eleven is gonna be different than an Albeco, yeah, but a five-eleven is, you know, so there's different qualities of it.
So obviously you might want to go with a better quality depending on the thing.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, yeah, I mean, uniforms, you know, one officer's one. So again, I'm not asking for a resolution, I just, we want feedback, if you guys have any other things, so then I can get the final votes together, hand it to you guys, if you guys can look over it and say, yeah, let's vote this one way. Uh, the next is security companies, again, I'm not looking for a resolution, I know that the chief of chief's family brought this up last time, and they had to go to public safety first, the public safety first approved of it. So again, I did some research on four companies, as well as Chief Nary, helping out with this research when he was here. Uh, this is, uh, these are four companies that would oversee the jail for our prisoners when we get them. Each company is around the same price in regards to how much they charge an hour. Black Diamond's twenty-eight dollars an hour, AT and Associates is twenty-seven dollars an hour, Chex is twenty-nine dollars per hour, and Allied is about twenty-nine dollars per hour. This, these quotes are Monday through Thursday, that they'd be on call, and then Friday, starting at four o'clock, and Monday at eight, about sixty hours in that timeframe. Of having them there, twenty-four seven, for the officers. The reason why I think we need a security company is that we're already low on manpower, running two officers now per shift. We have scheduling overtime as it is, sometimes we have trouble even getting officers to work the road. You add on a prisoner detail, watching prisoners, especially for twenty-four to forty dollars, that's a lot. And these companies are quite less than an officer would be, twenty-nine dollars is less than an officer would be for that price. I know that the numbers, you know, you guys want to know if the numbers would be quite to having a security company here. On the weekends, we had, I've done research from the past, from the past weekends, we had about, we had around four hundred officers, or four hundred, since we started the jail, we've had about four hundred officers, about four hundred prisoners in our jails. On the weekend, we had seventy-eight. So that's seventy-eight prisoners that we've had from the time from June two thousand twenty-four until now. So again, like I said, the jail would, having a security company to watch the jail would beneficially help the officers with the overtime. Our main goal is to have an officer, have three officers on each shift, who's had two on the road, and if we get somebody in the jail, we could have one in the chair.
Before I recognize this, Philip Awalii?
Did you short step again? You only have two officers?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes we only have two officers, but again, vacations come up, which leads to overtime, people, you know, if there's injured.
Did you, since the last time you presented that list for potential hires, did you lose any officers between right now?
No, we have twenty-one officers, apparently we have seventeen that are here for.
What is it, are there four vacation or?
No, due to disability suspended.
So you technically have seventeen. And we turned down the list that you guys were ready to tire?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, we did, and you guys did, but. Um, so I guess, again, I'm not looking for a resolution, I'm just looking, maybe if you guys want to do some more research in regards to this. I, I think I can try to find a company that would be on call, you know, four or seven days, it might be quite difficult due to the scheduling memory that that creates, especially when you have, you know, two hours or an hour to respond and say, hey, you know, we need, you know, coverage for twenty-four hours, that's really hard for a security company to do that. They might be out there, but I don't know if I can get three, but I can try. I mean, again, like, at the end of the day, we would like to have an officer that is, is watching it, send it to us, and then you send two officers out on the road.
Through the chair again, sorry. So I remember those customs, the security, I don't want to make that same mistake again. I suggest that we just, you still have a list, they can probably add a little more officers instead of bringing on a security company.
Before I recognize this, Joe Jackson?
You paid ten thousand dollars for your.
Dearborn's no longer an option, so we need to stop trying to revisit that because we're never going back there. No, I'm telling you that we're done with that and we're moving on. I get that, but we're moving on from that because Dearborn is no longer an option. Right, which Dearborn is no longer an option, so we need to, but it's time to rehash that. Thank you.
So, I mean, I'm sure you guys just think it may, you know, that's a number crunching, but I mean, just for, just that weekend, for the sixty hours that we need, the security company, if we pay twenty-nine thousand dollars, that's obviously like ninety-six thousand dollars per year, just for the weekend, sixty hours. And that's not including the four officers that we possibly can have. But again.
Through the chair?
Before I recognize this, Joe Jackson?
You said we have four hundred prisoners today?
To, from the, I have like two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-four.
And seventy-eight?
Seventy-eight, we're on the weekends, yeah. So again, I'm not looking for a resolution at this time, if you guys have any other options, or if you guys would want to, you know, hire a security company, if you'd like to.
Before I recognize this, Jack Phillips?
So, uh, before the prior company left, towards the end of their, they were doing it on that, on call during the week, and here on the week.
Yeah, yeah.
Did that seem to be more beneficial that way than prior, with everything being on the call?
Yeah, I mean, you know, so, so on the weekends, we have to use what's called Al County, it's not the same court system, it's, it's the Wayne County court system, and they're a lot slower, they have, prosecutors are only there until twelve o'clock, you know, and the judges, we have to get the cases in by ten thirty. So if we don't get them in that timeframe, which is very crunch, and we have to wait another twenty-four hours before the evening scene. So that's, that's where the problem is, and that's where the weekends are, plus, you know, we do, it does seem to ramp up on the weekend over your prisoners.
Chair? Let's do the chair. Did you, we talked about, you mentioned to me one time in my office that we would perhaps start our part-time employees, is that something we're still looking at or not?
So, yeah, I mean, so interns, I think, would also be very beneficial, we would have to start that program up, and that's paying, you know, twenty dollars an hour. A lot of the police departments that go on this, Dearborn Heights, Canton, Dearborn uses this, they would watch the jail, they can also take police reports. We would have to have a policy, we would have to hire them, we would have to give them training, but that is another added benefit, plus it could be a feeder system into having an officer, you know, a lot, Canton gets a lot of officers from their interns. That's another option I can look into. But that program might take a while to implement, but I think that would be very beneficial.
Any other discussion? Yes, before I recognize this, Jack Philip Housky?
Your intern, they have still a few in the county part as well?
Nope, no, yeah, pay house training, yep, because we probably, we possibly could use many counties, they have a real program, we could use them for however you want or you want. Yeah, and I think that long-term, that would be great.
How long would you think their training was there?
I don't know, it is something that I have to look into. Alright, the next would be to set up a, I guess, a discussion at some point for, see if we can put in our K nine program again. Again, this has had a lot of financial burden with our K nine program, but I also think it's very beneficial, we've had, we've had K nine programs for the past twenty, twenty-five years, ever since I've been here, the public seems to love it. And I think it would be very great for the city to have, if it was a part of it. The problem is, is that the initial cost for, if we use a K nine academy, which a lot of now we're using, it's called ATF, it's about fourteen thousand dollars initially for the K nine program to start up. That's nine thousand dollars for the K nine dog, six hundred dollars for the equipment, forty-five hundred dollars for the training. We also have vet bills and food bills, which comes through a couple thousand dollars per year. And then, so that's just initially getting dog and the program and the officer into the training program. And we, you have a K nine vehicle, so we don't have to purchase that, we do have a K nine vehicle. The end cost would be per year at least about three thousand dollars every year for vet, vet bills, food bills, things of that nature, so it's not only fourteen thousand dollars, every year it's about three thousand dollars.
Through the chair?
Before I recognize this, Joe Jackson?
So the money that we used to have a lot of for that program?
We did a lot with fundraising, so fundraising, we were able to get that program, we do have about, I guess, damn, we have about three thousand dollars left in there. And that's something that I'd like to bring up in the discussion, maybe.
I'm not talking about the fundraising, or, I mean, we had our K nine, we, how much did we, how much did we have for?
Before I recognize this, Rich, where's he?
So the, the last dog was purchased with a fundraiser. The city always budgets, right now we have the dog, which is had, pays all the bills. What he is referring to is to bring the program back, because the dog is retired, that initial cost, and then improve going forward, that would be his annual cost. So the last dog, the city paid for all the costs, as we had it to maintain, to continue to do it, it was never the initial cost that the city was paying, it wasn't in the budget. So the original budget is, what you just mentioned, that, et cetera.
Okay, so you said, how much is the total cost?
For initially, fourteen thousand one hundred, that's just for the, that's just for the training, they're going to do the vet, and so probably around sixteen, sixteen for that, that first initial cost for the first initial year.
Through the chair? Joe still has four.
So you don't have sixteen thousand in budget to pre that set?
We, we do once every, yes. So, through the chair, you need to take action because it is not in the budget, what's in the budget, if we can afford this, is the question, yes, we can. You can't just walk by and always not in there, it's like buying a car that's not in a very comfortable spot. So what he is requesting is to get the program going again, and do all this training, purchase the dog, so.
I would like to motion to, uh, give the, the fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand for any of us.
Sixteen thousand that they need to start the K nine program.
Moved by Jackson, supported by Marcy, any discussion? Yes, before I recognize this.
Already qualified as a member?
No, we would have to do interviews for that, no one is necessarily qualified, I think one of the requirements is that they're not on probation, and.
Does the K nine annual receive any kind of additional pay?
So, yeah, so the, oh, I don't know what they call it, the Garcia pay, it's like four, four dollars, or four hours, pay a week, extras for making it up, that's like a standard, roughly.
Before I recognize this, Philip Awalii?
I can't remember who it was exactly, but someone was willing to donate a K nine or the cost of it. Can I call more? More? Did someone call me at one point, you guys, to say that you were willing to donate a K nine dog or something like that, or like the cost of it?
The cost of it.
Do you remember who it was?
Do you remember who it was?
I, I'm sure, I don't know what it was.
Can we have, we rely on information for our, our last dog, I mean, that was, we had fundraisers, and that's, that's what, that's what I, for.
Through the chair. The floor recognizes Carter. I know I was involved with the fundraiser for the last dog through the PFW.
Okay.
Um, because we raised, so I think someone was sharing. But I just wanted to correct the record on what the cost is per year. I pulled all of the records, and from the ones that I found, I'm sure there's some that I've missed, um, but that cost over a two-year period for food and vet. And, um, the invoices I did find, I'm sure there was some that I missed, um, was a little over fifteen thousand, somewhere around sixteen thousand dollars for two years for dog payments. So.
I understand about the K nine, uh, payments, and this is, I mean, this is basically, what he said was around three thousand dollars. Of all out of these departments, I asked other departments, and they said they allowed it for a few thousand dollars, so.
I'm just talking about the invoices that were here that I pulled, you know, physically pulled.
Do you have those invoices with you?
No, this was last year that I pulled.
Oh, okay.
So they were the prior two years.
This year, they were.
The two prior years. But I'm sure I can find them again if I need it.
I don't know if, would the medical loan or higher connect, or?
But if we're going to, um, if we're going to find out if there's somebody willing to donate, um, is it a possibility to table this until the next meeting? We have a motion on the floor.
I have a similar motion.
Joyce, and your second?
Oh.
All right.
So, okay. They missed the, the, the program.
Please, we have a motion, we need a second. Who, you did, okay, so now it's Mercy, and, okay, now we can do discussion again.
Through the chair.
Yep, go ahead, the floor.
We've got a dog for a while, um, I know there's kids who, uh, do PR work for the police department. But right now, our police department's doing a lot of PR work. With that, your dog is very valuable to our city, and it's trained, right? Where are you going to have this dog trained at?
Um, serves as teacher, um, you know, uh, apprehension, um, as well as, you know.
What was Mays?
What was Mays?
Yeah, what was that?
Uh, Spence.
Spence. What was he trained?
Same, same drugs, yeah, drug protection, um, apprehension.
Through the chair.
All right. Floor recognizes Joe Jackson.
So, can we set it up like this, where we make the motions, put the money aside for it, but if we get donation for the dog, then we just donate money towards future costs? Money that we already have. I mean, it's gonna have that deal, it's gonna have all kind of, the money that we already have for the, the future.
Do you want to mind your motion?
Um, well, I think the, my motion's gonna stand, I mean, anybody out there wishing to donate to the dog over there?
That wasn't my question, I was just, if you wanted to mind your. Thank you. Um, all right, any other discussion? Same time, hold on.
Yeah, Phillip Wally?
Yeah.
Mercy? Phillip Wally?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
All right.
It's good to see you, everybody, good evening, board. Um, E G for Gabriel, keep sure it's K nine, um, but I'm not sure if you can hear us. Chief, I talked to Chief Burris today, he would like us to promote our, you know, uh, smoke detector program.
Sure.
Um, anyone in the, in the city of Melvindale, if they need smoke detectors, we have the desk that will come install them, put proper amount needed for, uh, the residents, uh, they can contact us at three one three nine four three two one three four. Uh, set an appointment date, you want us to install them for them. So even if they have not, they have a mountain burger house, or if they have a night.
Do you have a flyer that we can post online?
I can get something for you guys, I don't have, I guess, I don't have four, five, a little bit here. It's gonna be my birthday event, so you guys look wonderful, that has nothing to do with whether they spread us. No, but I will, I'll get something over for you guys probably tomorrow.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, if you see anything, I'll let you back this start, another time, actually, guys, so if you need anything, you know, your calls. You're welcome.
All right, well, this is a water director.
Thank you, Dan, for that thing here. Um, so the Allen Water Main Project, I was just remembering, uh, remembering Allen. We're, uh, replacing the water main on Allen Road between Outer Drive and South Dearborn, um, just under two miles. Um, from, on the south side of Old Wood, we're going, upsizing from an eight inch up to a twelve inch, um, and then north of Old Wood, it's a sixteen inch main. Um, plan's been approved, and we have permit from, uh, the state of DVO, and plan's been approved by Wayne County, but there's two, two more administrative things, um, before they'll issue the permit and the contractor can get started. Um, so the first one, um, is a resolution to, um, abandon the existing water main in Allen Road. It's a county roadway, and for us to remove that, would be removing a bunch of pavement, replacing a bunch of pavement that is the county's, uh, to maintain. Um, so they allow us to abandon the water main, we fill it with a flowable fill, it's like a liquidy concrete that hardens in there. Um, they allow us to abandon it, um, and so the resolution would read, um, a resolution to permit the abandonment of the existing water main as part of the Allen Road Water Main Replacement between Outer Drive and South Dearborn Street, whereas the city of Melvindale wishes to abandon the existing water main as part of the Allen Road Water Main Replacement Project, whereas an application for the Allen Road Water Main Replacement Approval has been submitted to Wayne County inside permanent review number TR twenty-four F one zero eight, whereas Rule four point two six of the Wayne County Permit Manual allows abandonment of water main and blow-off removal under the following conditions. Um, condition one, the utility owner shall maintain ownership and responsibility for the abandoned facility. Number two, at the discretion of Wayne County, the owner of any abandoned facility may be required to remove its facility and restore all areas to condition satisfactory to Wayne County. Condition three, all abandoned pipe structures or conduits shall be filled with flowable fill material. And number four, the utility owner shall maintain detailed records of the abandoned facility, including but not limited to location, depth, size, and type of material. A copy of these records should be submitted to the Wayne County Permit Office. Whereas the city of Melvindale has agreed to abandon the existing water main under the conditions set forth as referenced above in Rule four point two six of the Wayne County Permit Manual. Whereas the city of Melvindale submitted the water main plans, Wayne County entitled Allen Road Water Main Replacement, which has been tentatively approved by the county, pending the issuance of this resolution and acceptance by the city of Melvindale. And now therefore be it resolved, the city of Melvindale agrees to abandon the existing water main under the Allen Road Water Main Replacement Project and advised by the conditions set forth in Rule four point two six of the Wayne County Permit Manual as stated above.
Someone? Moved by Carter, supported by Jackson, any discussion? Floor recognizes Ken Filipowski.
Well, um, the mains are gonna go, then, well, they actually can be turned off, so the, the, the work is all along, and they'll replace that.
They will be, but it'll be limited to, they'll be a bore pit.
Okay.
And then go from one hydrant to the other.
Okay.
Um, so we will be replacing some concrete, but this eliminates the need to replace, you know, a whole lane of concrete for Wayne County and the city's expense.
And these are all underneath the street, or is it on the sidewalk?
No, it's on the, it's on the, it's on the.
Okay.
We're worried about this project, just so we know, we're gonna be, um, at the intersection here over the, uh, road. Plan on, that getting redone, so hopefully, uh, it looks now, be a lot different after this project.
A lot of water mains cross at that intersection, so we'll be going out there. We have to do the whole, all the sidewalk ramps at that intersection, and why they don't be done there.
So one of the questions is, all with that. How long will the road area be closed that you're gonna be doing this area?
Um.
How will they be closed?
If they be made out. It, it'll, it'll be phased, um, and especially through, um, that, that Oakwood intersection, there'll probably be three phases. Um, but no, there'll be no road closure, no nature, it, it may be one, I'll see the lane closure at a time. Um, and then, the, the most tricky part will be Oakwood and Allen, um, because it'll either be three or four phases, the way they break it out.
Yes, the floor recognizes Joe Jackson.
Okay, so you said all those sidewalks and all those curbs are gonna be replaced?
At the corners, they're gonna be probably, but at that, at that corner, we have all four, uh, four corners. We gotta be two, two gates and stuff, you know, here and there.
So it goes places in the brick, or they're?
Brick is out there.
I think, I think, I, I, I'm sure that would go, that would make the nights, ice real deep depth at the corners, so if they do run over the trucks and doesn't break, I think you need to analyze the nice thicker type sidewalk at each corner, makes you cover heavier traffic, because what's going on now? We could need to work with the contractor, we gotta, we'll have to do a little stuff different there, I mean, I, the first looked great, but these are, they're not useful with the trucks and everything else around. As you can see now.
Yeah.
I think the concrete there's, I've heard a lot of this now, so I'm sure that's done a little different and stuff.
Yeah, last time, Carter, Wayne County, uh, Andy, Andrew, that came out, and he said, this is not enough support, um, for the concrete, and that's why all the curbs are busting when the trucks go over them. Um, and so I was actually still waiting on Semco, because they have the tape walk school program, so they go in and replace all the sidewalks, um, trying to correlate that with them coming to replace the street. Because they're gonna do, um, right now, they're working on Outer Drive, but their goal is to replace Allen, I'll wait to, uh, South Dearborn and that intersection at Oakwood and Allen.
We saw, we didn't get together.
Yeah, so it would be a good idea to, now, because that's on their plan, uh.
Better figure that out, you know, yeah.
It, it's kind of like, um, waiting on them, but at the same time, they're like, we need just a, a permit to remove the bricks. I'm like, I can't remove the bricks until I know when you guys are coming to do, go for the work, because I don't want, this, yeah, it's gonna be a hazard, so. It's been kind of back and forth with them, and they don't move quickly, no.
And, and this project, well, is only preparing where we're ripping up, but, but at that whole intersection, but there's a lot of other side of the wall.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was walking down there, and I was like, wow, there is definitely some work that needs to be done here, so. Do you need, so we have a motion on the floor, I think? Let's go ahead and, is there any other discussion? Same time, hold on.
Jackson?
Yes.
Phillip Wally?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Filipowski?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, and then the, uh, second, I don't, and this is also, um, the permit pending this too. And I'm not ready to ask for a resolution today, I just wanted to bring it in front of all of you, um, and show you these two exhibits. So this, this water main on Allen Road, it crosses under two, um, county drains, three closed drains. Um, one is a, which, that is pretty common, um, at one point, there was a river breach, and they just, they all put it in a pipe.
I don't know, like, one on hand, you know, it goes through, the hands, through the house, so.
So, so we're, the water main will be crossing under a forty-eight inch, um, storm sewer pipe and a thirty-six inch storm sewer pipe, um, just rain sewer. Um, but there, the county requires, uh, drain crossing agreement, for the, for each, each drain district requires an agreement with them. Um, so what I've done is I've submitted, um, these exhibit A's that are in your packet to the county, um, and their legal counsel is working up an agreement. Um, as soon as I have that, I'll, I'll share it, um, with, with Mr. Cookin', and, um, come back and be asking for a resolution. But I just wanted to bring that up and let you know it'd be coming.
Through the chair.
The floor recognizes Phillip Wally.
So, I know one point you were working on this, uh, mayor, the, uh, water tower. Um, can, can you guys help with giving us some quotes for water tower? Because obviously, like, I mean, I need you guys to, well, we all need to prioritize these things, because, you know, people are struggling, like, hard core with these water bills, and I think everyone can agree to it. Um, so we need, we need two to three quotes, and I'm not sure what we're working on, but if we can get that, and we can, you know, proceed on.
So, um, um, so Leewa is changing their rate structure, and so no matter if we have water tower or not, it's gonna be a flat rate. So that will not be a costly thing to us anymore, so, yeah. Because a lot of cities going to water towers, there's already to lose revenue, and some are, I don't even know what's worth it, they're, they're not a private entity, so.
So Leewa's a, 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 authority to act in way of ultimate.
So as much as that was gonna be like a solution, um, it's no longer.
I think feasibility study might be.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of, it's a lot of water mains that's still in work.
Oh, yeah, we'll go back to water mains, I mean, we, 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 we done. Plus, I did have a, a few years back, I think, I did get a cost on a water tower, but we tried to get them to ramp on, for that was a few years back. Um, yeah, I mean, it, it, maybe if the tower's not gonna work yet, maintenance drop, or it's not, it's not gonna be utilized for anything.
Hold on a second. So, have you heard anything about the storage tanks through Leewa? Because I know, um, that they pay the municipality to store water for them. Um, if we, we may be able to look at that as an option?
I, I, I can look into that.
I don't know that we would have an area to store water, but.
Well, we've got two money gallon tanks over there.
I love it.
Through the chair, and, uh.
I guess I'll.
I, uh, I wonder if they're gonna implement this new structure here, or like, uh, the, uh.
So, I, from my understanding, it's already in the process, and they actually haven't been rolled out yet.
Remember, here in the, it was like, I mean, five years or something like that.
So, I, through the chair, I don't know the exact details of it, but what we were doing is not completely implemented, I mean, it used to be fixed cost and variable cost.
Okay.
And the variable is how much you use to increase, the water tanks would alleviate that, I guess. Now they're switched, I don't know the ratio, I don't know if it is completely implemented now, but it's here with all the infrastructure, they're doing trouble. You see, um, well, isn't that, they were doing one. So they want the fix rate, knowing that we need to bring in this much money, and then we'll have smaller variable costs. I don't know if that's implemented right now, but it is that.
Can we, can we double check if it's, it's in five years, or is it? It doesn't save people some money in within the five years, I mean, we're getting a grant for it anyways, but if we can check on that, please.
They're, they should. They have already, I think in this past one, it, it did, they are going up to flat, and it seems like they're trending even more, more, like, I, it's almost like they're, I, I think they're gonna do it incrementally, where it just keeps stepping up in flat rate and transition away from how much you use, but we, I, we definitely check into it.
Appreciate it. Through the chair.
Um, the floor recognizes Joe Jackson.
I should address a lot of questions that I had, and send questions. I want to tell you that we're losing thirty-seven percent, thirty-seven percent of our water main charges.
Not sure exactly, I don't know.
I don't know if they touch on the owner of nap, but the water loss has decreased, I believe it is down to maybe, you know, I think it's probably fifteen percent, or it's maybe.
I think we're at twenty now, that's what.
Twenty right now, it's supposed to have a higher number, but.
It should be going all or half.
I don't know where the loss is.
Around this area, anywhere from twenty, twenty-five is pretty, pretty common. Twenty-five is, is probably more standard. It sounds, sounds high, but.
At thirty, when we ran thirty-seven, that's pretty high.
Yeah, it's, it's a significant improvement, I mean, you still have more time, I mean, with that road, yeah. Um, next year, we have Oakwood, more sections of Oakwood, related, and, um, some smaller streets, you know, um, just waiting on, uh, the funding.
And that was a big reason why we're believing, was saying, we're saying we're losing so much of our water, yeah, but we're not seeing relief. We're never fixing our infrastructure. We just keep raising rates.
So I think at this point, um, it's now where we need to get legislation involved and have, um, start fighting this, because they, they raise the rates every year, and while water tank in your home is not a necessity, but water in general is a necessity, and so I think, but it's absolutely absurd that they charge, they don't. So I think at this point, um, it's now where we need to get legislation involved and have, um, start fighting this, because they, they raise the rates every year, and while water tank in your home is not a necessity, but water in general is a necessity, and I think, but it's absolutely absurd that they charge the amount that they do for water. So, I've, I've been talking with a couple people in Lansing, and kind of railing the troops to, um, like, have a town hall or do something to let them know, um, if everybody stops paying for water, then there aren't gonna be a situation, so.
We're just, just outside.
Yeah, but they, nothing happens, you go to the meeting, and you can stand there and jump up and down, and it's crazy, yeah, like, you're still raising your rate. Right, exactly. And it was my understanding that every community was gonna have a person on the board, and we don't, and there's a lot of other communities that don't, so I was, and that was nice to my girl. All right, thank you. All right, any other official comments or comments? Uh, do you have else?
I don't remember anything, but I think person, or something, or thing, or need, or need.